We are going to forego the usual introductions and welcome our two candidates today to the podium. Today, we have the two candidates for the special election to fill the city council at-large group three position, made vacant due to the untimely death of Tommy Hazori, who would like to welcome candidates Tracy Pulson and Nick Howland. See if we can do this here. I know that works. Okay. Today's format, each candidate will have five minutes for opening statements. By prior arrangement, Tracy Pulson will go first. At the end of opening statements, we will begin the question and answer session. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer. Each will then have one minute for follow-up or rebuttal. At the end of the Q and A segment, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. The candidate that spoke second at the opening will go first closing. And as was noted to the membership by email and as you were greeted as you were coming in today, all questions are to be submitted in writing. Those that did not submit a question when they arrived but still wish to ask one, please write it down and bring it to the head table. And with that, we will begin. And also, the last little piece that wasn't in here. Don Moore, who is sitting at the front table, will give each of you a one-minute warning on the opening statement and a 30-second warning. And during the question sessions, a 30-second warning during the answer phase. With that, Tracy, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dr. Tracy Pulson. Can everyone hear me okay? Anne Marie, can you hear me in the back? It's lovely to be with you. I am Dr. Tracy Pulson. I am a mom to five grown children, a wife, a clinical social worker, a mental health professional, with my own private practice here in Jacksonville where I work with adults and couples and families who have suffered from a variety of traumatic events. And I've been doing this work for more than 20 years. This work is incredibly meaningful to me and important. I'm also a breast cancer survivor and a daughter of an Army veteran. I got into this race, unfortunately, due to the untimely death of Tommy Hazori, who many of you in this room knew and loved. He was an incredible public servant and leader. When I ran for the Florida House in 2018, I was honored to have his endorsement. And I've carried him and his family with me every step of this campaign. During this campaign, I think many of you have been following this campaign and what we've been talking about. And it was interesting to see yesterday in the poll that was released by UNF that one of the main issues that we began talking about at the very beginning came out in their poll as being a concern for the majority of folks here in Jacksonville and Duval. And that has to do with trust. We have a trust problem with our public officials in Jacksonville. And we saw that over the last couple of years. In fact, it was in this room when we had two members of city council come and talk to us about the pros and cons of selling JEA. And we know how that turned out. In fact, that investigation is still ongoing. But the public outcry that people did not want to sell our public utility was a pivotal point, I think, in politics here in Jacksonville. We also saw the lot J debacle, where in a back-room deal, a handful of people tried to ram through something that would have been devastating to the taxpayers. So we've been talking about throughout this campaign and the town halls that we've held, the importance that I think a lot of people have forgotten, which is if you're an elected official, we work for you. We don't work for the developers, the lobbyists, special interest groups. We work for the people in this city. And that is something that I've been talking a lot about. In addition, we've been talking about public safety, but as you all know, through the lens of a mental health professional, which I am. And the impact that mental health has, not just on people in our community, which we see every day, but also police officers. And wanting to make that an important part of public safety. We've also talked about climate. I mean, here we are in this room, and we're surrounded by water. And we need to be looking at, again, development and anything that we do in the city through the lens of resiliency and sustainability, and make sure that we protect our natural resources. But if we're building on the waterfront, we need to be mindful of that so that these buildings can last a long time and are as green as they possibly can be. I want to just say one other thing, which is we're nearing the end of this campaign, and I have been so incredibly moved and touched by the support that I've had all over this city. We've held numerous town halls. We've knocked on thousands of doors. And I'm just really, really honored and deeply touched. And I'm hoping that each and every one of you here has already voted. But if you haven't, please tell everyone you know to get out and vote. This election matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
All right.
Oh, excuse me real quick. If I could ask, everybody can hold your applause until the end of the session. Thank you. Go ahead, Nick. Sorry.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thanks to Bill Bishop. Thanks to the members of Tiger Bay for having this debate today. I'm honored to be here, and there's few places I'd rather be, but there is one that I'd rather be, down at that large bouncy house that I saw come out when I was driving over Main Street. Though I may be a little bit too old for that. I turned 59 last week. Sorry, 49 last week. Big difference there. Turned 49 last week, and while we've been in the middle of a campaign that's kind of in the heat of it right now with just five days left, I haven't had a lot of time to reflect. But I did reflect a little bit, looking back at my first half-century of life. And I think I can summarize it with three words: service, leadership, and family. So let me talk a little bit about service first. So I served in the United States Navy mid-'90s as a naval officer. Two years on a destroyer, two years at a Navy SEAL boat unit where we inserted and extracted Navy SEALs. I've been in this city for 15 years. I've served on the city's environmental protection board, eight years, including the last as chair. I served on the charter revision commission, the most recent one, where we really took an in-depth look at the charter and made some pretty significant and could-be groundbreaking recommendations for our city. But as far as leadership, whole history of, big history of leadership, and the thing I'm most proud of in my life. And after I got out of the Navy, I was in business school when 9/11 happened. And I had thought about going back into the Navy. I thought about what I could do to contribute and help my country as we were getting ready to fight the global war on terror. And I decided, you know, instead of going to be an investment banker in the city of New York, which originally had been my plan, I chose to enter the defense industry. I went to work for Raytheon doing strategy in mergers and acquisitions. And I helped Raytheon put together the first kind of comprehensive strategy for homeland security that industry partnered with government to implement. And then I was recruited by Armor Holdings to do strategy and M&amp;A back here in Jacksonville in 2006 and moved, my wife and my newborn moved here back then. Since then, I've been in the protective product industry mostly for defense, marine, first responders, law enforcement, making life rafts, life jackets, wet suits, dry suits, body armor for about the past 20 years of my career, and assuming leadership roles, running companies while doing so. And most recently, I took over as executive director of the Fire Watch, which is Florida's fight to end veteran suicide. But really, family has been the story of my last 20 years. My son, two sons, 16-years-old and 13-years-old. We determined that there's no better place to raise them than Jacksonville, Florida. I've got one at Stanton, one at Landon. And that's why I'm running, because I think we're at a pivotal point in our history in Jacksonville, where we're a million residents now. We're going to be 1.3 million residents by the next census in 2030. We have the opportunity to be a great American city, but that takes leadership, and it takes service. And my platform is all about supporting those who protect us: first responders, police, military, and veterans. Creating jobs, not only for people here, but for all the families that are going to be moving down to Jacksonville over the next 10 years. And then finally, a strategic plan for growth to ensure not only that we develop into a great American city, but we preserve the amazing quality of life we have in all of our neighborhoods right now or improve it where we can see improvement in quality of life in certain neighborhoods. So this city takes leadership. We'll need leadership to get where we need to be in 2030. That's why I run for city council.
Thank you. The first question, as we always say, is the fang-in-the-claw question, which I get to ask. Look at me. "In the interest of the civics discussion we had at lunch, and for the benefit of the Tiger Bay members who do not know this, there are 19 city council members, 14 that represent and are elected by districts, and five that are elected countywide. There is nothing in either the city charter or the rules of the council that differentiates the roles, responsibilities, authorities, or terms of office of district or at-large council members. Do you think there should be, and if you do, what? Tracy?"
That's a great question. No. I'd have to study that some more, but my first instinct is to say no, because if you're elected to represent people in this city, you should think about not just the folks that live in your own backyard, which I think can be a particular blind spot, but I think it makes sense to think about the city as a whole. And we know that Jacksonville, that each neighborhood is very different, and folks don't necessarily look the same in every neighborhood. And so I think if you have people that think about the entire city and not just where they live, it could make for a much more equitable city for all of us.
Nick?
I agree with a lot of those comments. I believe, and one of the reasons I'm running for the at-large, is there is a historical precedent that establishes kind of a distinct difference between district city council people and at-large city council people. That said, when you're elected, whether from a district or an at-large, you should have responsibility for representing the entire constituency of Duval County. The reason I'm running for at-large, and the reason I decided to jump in this race, is simply because my platform and the leadership I want to bring to the city of Jacksonville could be better executed from an at-large position. I have the opportunity to look at the entire city, the entire county, and look from a perspective of driving safer streets and neighborhoods, creating jobs and bringing jobs to all parts of this city, and developing a strategic plan for growth, which would not only constitute developing downtown, but also in our urban core and some of our outline areas. So I think there is a broader role to look at larger strategic initiatives for an at-large city council person.
Okay. Tracy, any follow-up?
No.
Okay. Nick?
No follow-up.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. All right, Nick, first question. Next question then goes to you. "As a retired Navy veteran, I am concerned about the growing legislation against LGBTQ people. Can you tell us how you personally and professionally supported or opposed Jacksonville's HRO?"
I would have voted for the HRO in the most recent recommendation, as did the city council.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I would fight any efforts at discrimination for anything: age, gender, race, sexual orientation. There's no room for discrimination in our city, in our state, and in our country.
Tracy?
Absolutely. And many of you know that Tommy Hazori was a champion for the HRO, and that's part of his legacy. And so we rolled out a couple of weeks ago the most comprehensive LGBTQ platform in the history of Jacksonville. It's something that is important, I think, to Nick's point about discrimination, but really uplifting a part of our community that has felt very disenfranchised, marginalized, and literally attacked. And sometimes, people die because of their sexual orientation. So I spoke out in favor of it when the most recent glitch happened, and I would continue to advocate for anything that is in that space, but more importantly, to fight hard against anything to try to attack it.
Follow-up, Nick?
The only thing I would add is that I think our HRO bill, which went through two iterations and then went through significant debate in the second iteration, came out in a reasonable way that's appropriate for our city. I mean, it's a little bit different than some of the passages you see in North Carolina and things like that. So we're not as restrictive as far as having, you know, folks be able to choose whatever bathroom you want to go into, which could endanger some folks. So I'm pleased with where we are, and I'm happy with the HRO law as written today.
Tracy?
Yeah, there's absolutely no proof that people who identify as LGBTQ have anything to do with what bathrooms people use. That's a falsehood. It's another example of discrimination and ignorance. And I saw a lot of that when we were listening to public comments. And it was stunning that there were people in this city who still believe that. So that would be something that I would be very vocal about.
All right. Tracy, this one starts with you. "Just last year, there was an effort by a school board member to change the name of Andrew Jackson High School and Reball High School. What is your position regarding name changes of other monuments or locations in Jacksonville?"
Well, I'm on record in alignment with Mayor Curry, by the way, for taking down the Confederate monuments. And I appreciate, and we're still waiting, by the way. He did that at a Black Lives Matter march more than two years ago with the Jacksonville Jaguars. And he said, "Black lives matter." So we're waiting on that monument to come down. But in terms of the school names, I really liked the way that that was handled by letting people here in Jacksonville vote on that. And, you know, this is a part of democracy that makes a lot of sense to me, which is I might have a particular feeling about something, but when you ask the people who live here their opinion, you might not always agree with it, just as in elections, but you should abide by it.
Nick?
Yeah, I'm on record many times on this issue as well. I don't think regarding monuments that it's as easy as tearing them down or keeping them up. I believe we need to add to and put context around them. For me, the easiest way to repeat an ugly past is to delete an ugly past. So I would focus on city council engaging in that process that we have a plan to develop where we look at a comprehensive citywide plan on monuments. And I would focus on how we add to and contextualize the history. It's not as easy as when you develop new history, ripping pages out of a book. The appropriate thing to do is add to the history and contextualize it.
Tracy?
So this is what I do every day in my work, which is talk about the past and understanding it so that we don't repeat it in the future. What we're talking about, though, is not burying anything. It's not removing it. We can never unerase or undo our 400-plus-year history with regards to slavery and human rights. And so I think that, again, that's part of the narrative that I don't agree with, and I think we can do both.
Nick?
The only thing I would add is you need to understand and add to and contextualize history to make sure you don't repeat it. If you've just climbed Mount Everest, and you have survived oxygen deprivation and a blizzard and a couple slip-and-falls to your near-death, and you're talking to your son about, you know, potentially him climbing Mount Everest, you're going to talk about what you did to overcome that oxygen deprivation, getting extra oxygen. You're going to talk about how you survived that blizzard. You're going to talk about how you survived those slip-and-falls. So therefore, the people that come after you don't go through the same troubles that you have. So to me, erasing history will just repeat history. You need to add to and contextualize and share history, even if it's ugly.
Thank you. All right. Nick, this goes to you first. "Should there be an increased connection between the city of Jacksonville and the Duval County Public Schools? How would you make it happen, not just talk, such as regarding school placements, closings, and impacts on neighborhoods?"
Yeah, I think there's lots of times where we need to interact closely at the city level and Duval County Public Schools. And we have a liaison right now. We have a bunch of city properties that could be used for schools, a bunch of Duval County properties that potentially need to be closed or repurposed. There's a lot of opportunities for DCPS and the city to work together.
Tracy? Can you repeat the question?
"Should there be an increased connection between the city of Jacksonville and Duval County Public Schools? How would you make it happen, not just talk, such as regarding school placements, closings, and impact on neighborhoods?"
So I think there probably already is. And whether or not that needs to be expanded or strengthened, I would need more information about. But I would say this, which is that similar to about home rule, the people on the school board know best. I mean, they're doing this work every day. They're the closest to their communities, to their schools. If I'm elected as city council, I would want to work closely with them. But I would look to them first and foremost as the experts about what's going on.
Nick, follow-up?
And I always have been on record as being a strong advocate for educational options for our children and for our parents. And the city working together with the school board is one such example where we can deliver that. The city can look at permitting to help nonprofit network, proven network charter schools come in, like they have with the IDEA schools and with the KIPP schools. And by all means, the city has a role in helping expand educational options and improving education in our city.
Tracy?
I'm concerned what's happening in Tallahassee right now as it relates to public education when the governor is threatening to penalize and punish students because of the mask mandates early on in the pandemic. So again, I think that when I think about this issue, home rule means a lot and not having the overreach from Tallahassee.
Okay. This next question is directed to Nick. "What are 'our' values per your TV ads?"
Explain that one again.
"What are quote-unquote 'our' values per your TV ads?"
Okay. Our values are supporting those who protect us: first responders, police, firefighters, active-duty military, and veterans. Our values are creating jobs for families in Jacksonville. Our values are strong fiscal responsibility on city council. Our values are strategic growth and positioning our city that it becomes a city that is a wonderful place for everybody to live, regardless of what part of the city you live in. Our values are improving neighborhoods in every part of Duval County."
Okay. Tracy, you have a follow-up of any sort?
Well, I share those values, but I don't share lying blatantly about somebody to score cheap political points. And Nick, you know that that ad is a lie. To have a police officer say to camera, "Tracy Pulson attacks police," is a blatant lie. You know it, and I know it. And I'm telling each and every person here, this is one of the reasons why people are disgusted and disengaged with politics. I am on record as being for supporting our law enforcement. I have talked about it from the lens of a mental health professional and expanding the co-responder program. And this is a program that is from Department of Justice funding. So this is not about defunding the police. And in fact, city council voted unanimously a couple of weeks ago to expand it even further.
Nick, follow-up?
Well, calling someone a liar comes hard to me because I like to do my own research and make sure I'm not wrong before I would do something like that. But it seems to come really easy to you, Tracy. In fact, I think college students could probably build a drinking game around how many times you call me a liar during these debates and what have you. If you're calling me a liar, you're calling the sheriff a liar. You're calling the Fraternal Order of Police a liar. You're calling your own Safer Together report a liar. It says right here, "When discussing defunding the policing in this report, we're discussing moving budget solutions around to help create solutions, such as funding the co-responder program." You're also calling the BLM movement lying because right on their website, it says, "We know that police don't keep us safe, and as long as we continue to pump money into our corrupt criminal justice system at the expense of housing, health, and educational investments, we will never truly be safe." That's why we are calling to defund the police. When we talk about defunding the police, we're talking about making a major pivot in national priorities.
Time.
We need to see a shift from spending on police to a shared vision of community safety that actually works.
Time. Okay. Tracy?
It's not my report. It's not my, my name is not on that report. This report was done long before I got into this race. And I have never called you a liar. I have said that your statements about me are lies. I don't name-call. And I want to be on record once again as saying, this has already been debunked by the local news. Channel 4, WJXT, called it false. It is just untrue.
Okay, thank you. The next question goes to you, Tracy. "Regarding dangers to Jacksonville's environment, I believe you are planning, if elected, to address the problem of extreme heat. Could you elaborate on how you plan to address that issue in a way that is equitable in every neighborhood?"
So this is something that I learned during this campaign. We did a town hall on climate change and climate justice. On a really hot day in Jacksonville, the heat difference, the temperature difference between Shands Downtown and Ortega is more than 10 degrees. And what this means is that we have people that are presenting at the emergency room at UF Shands for heat stroke and dehydration. And so this is a health equity issue as well as a climate change issue. When we talk about heat mapping, we need to be looking at development all across the city and where we are building in such a way to trap heat, and then where there are no tree canopies as well. And again, be mindful of that in terms of development, but already existing neighborhoods where we could do some things related to that by planting trees, planting the right kind of trees that can also help with erosion as well as heat. I think it would be really useful to do a heat mapping of the entire city so that we have even more data to make those decisions.
Can you repeat a question, please, Bill?
No, I shouldn't have it myself.
Tracy, Tracy.
Sorry.
We want to change mics out.
Okay.
Okay. Test that. Make sure it's working.
Hello? Can people hear me in the back?
Okay, good. Okay, here's the question. "Regarding dangers to Jacksonville's environment, I believe you are planning, if you are elected, to address the problem of extreme heat. Could you elaborate on how you plan to address that issue in a way that is equitable in every neighborhood?" That was a question addressed to Tracy, and then yours is the follow-up to that.
Well, obviously, green space helps reduce the heat. But in particular, if we look at environmental measures and environmental protection. I served on the Environmental Protection Board for eight years. I know a lot of the major issues that our city faces. Protecting the river is by far one of the most important things that we need to do from a city leadership perspective, particularly as we grow. And I think environmental protection and economic development are not mutually exclusive things.
Okay. Tracy?
Yeah, I'm curious, when you were served on the board, what exactly did you do to help mitigate heat and anything related to protecting the river?
Heat never came up on the, wait, is she allowed to ask questions? No, I'm fine with it.
We're going down a road. If you're fine with it, go for it.
Heat was never an issue that came up during my eight years on the Environmental Protection Board. The river is an issue that came up repeatedly. And we funded the Health of the River Report. We always monitored fecal coliform. We looked at achieving reductions in nutrients in some of the tributaries. It was a regular issue. We funded lots of organizations that had novel approaches to helping reduce our environment and to improve our rivers. And we also, as a quasi-judicial organization, enforced local penalties on violations.
Okay, great. On this next question, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty in editorializing the commentary because I think it does it for clarity. There has been, let's see, this, I'm off-track here. Nick, I think you're next on a question that goes to both parties. "There has been discussion about the defunding the police narrative throughout this campaign. Yet our own city government has changed pension benefits for uniformed officers and first responders. With the city's budget tightening, what do you propose doing to ensure essential workers and first responders are not left behind?"
And that question goes to me first.
That goes to you first, yeah.
Well, we need to always prioritize our first responders and our essential first-line workers, always. And, you know, we know right now that we're 300 to 400 officers short of where we need to be to keep our streets and our neighborhoods safe. That's a report that we'll soon see out from the International Associations of the Chief of Police. It's a report out when you extrapolate numbers from the FBI, which says that to govern a metropolitan area similar to ours, you need 2.3 to 2.4 sworn officers per 1,000. We're at under 2. So with 1 million residents, we're about 300 to 400 officers short. Those are facts. And we always need to prioritize public safety. I think this race has come down to support for public safety, and rightfully so, because I hope we can finally put a narrative, that whole narrative about defunding the police, behind us and prove to the men and women of JSO that we have their backs.
Okay. Just real quick, when I said I was editorializing on the wording, what I was really doing is clarifying for accuracy the way it was worded. There was a portion of the question that was not exactly accurate, and I wanted to make sure that it was. Okay, Tracy?
But I guess I'm wondering about the answer, which is, you asked about the pension, correct?
I'll reread it.
Okay.
"There has been discussion about the defunding the police narrative throughout this campaign. Yet our own city government has changed pension benefits for uniformed officers and first responders. With the city's budget tightening, what do you propose doing to ensure essential workers and first responders are not left behind?"
So my understanding, and I'm not an expert on this, but that is that Jacksonville is the only city where the police are not part of the state pension program. And to your point, I mean, that was a deal that was made between JSO and the city council and the mayor, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that puts our officers at risk. They should be competitive. They should not be penalized in that way. And I would want a lot more information as to why we can't have them be a part of the state pension plan as well. I think that feels really equitable, and will go a long way to making sure that folks want to come and work here.
Nick, follow-up?
The only thing I'll add is that that pension plan was also approved by the Fraternal Order of Police, as far as I understand it.
Tracy?
Again, I just think that we need to be thinking about, I'm sure it was some sort of a deal that was worked out. I'm just not sure that it's really working for the men and women in blue right now.
Okay, this next question goes to Nick directly. "You have been critical of the use of police co-responder programs that include mental health professionals. Sheriff Williams is expanding JSO's co-responder program, and city council voted unanimously to support that just a week ago as council accepted a DOJ grant to fund it. Do you still oppose the sheriff's co-responder program?"
I don't oppose the sheriff's co-responder program at all. I oppose shifting money from police budgets to the co-responder program. And that vote- I oppose shifting money from police budgets to the coresponder program, and that vote last week was on a DOJ grant, not existing JSO budget money. So right now, our coresponders are supported and funded by a DOJ grant, a directed grant specifically for mental health coresponders. If you talk to the police or the sheriff about how they use that program, they have very defined rules of engagement. Because, you know, just like my military experience, if I'm on an op, I don't want to have someone who's not as highly trained as I am on that operation, because then I gotta not only worry about taking the objective, but also the people along with me. Same thing with the police. So there's very narrow, specific rules of engagement that they use these mental health coresponders. My plan is to support the police and support JSO through their efforts to retain, through their efforts to hire more police officers, through their efforts to bring technology to help them police our city and keep our streets and our neighborhoods safe. My opponent's plan would redirect money to expand the mental health program to one mental health responder per district per shift. That's above and beyond what's in the budget right now. That is directing money, budget money, away from JSO's budget to community activities. That's, by the Safer Together report, defunding the police.
Tracy?
This is political doublespeak. Mr. Howland is right that that money is from a Department of Justice grant, and it's working. And the police are talking about how it's working. It is saving lives, it is preventing people from being put in jail who belong in a hospital or treatment, and that makes sense, that makes good common sense. If a program is working, don't you think there's probably some more funding out there to go and find it? This is part of the narrative, which is that I am for defunding the police. I have never, ever said that I would take money out of the existing budget, as if one person has that power. It's ludicrous.
Nick?
The only thing I would add is, yes, if the sheriff could get more DOJ grant money, he'd probably expand elements of that program, but it's not gonna be from the current existing budget, which he needs desperately to increase the number of police that there are. So I guess we're at odds, but that, as defined by the Safer Together report, is defunding the police. And why would you threaten to shift around an elected sheriff's budget when we just had crime reports where overall crime's down 13% in the last three years, and where homicides are down 26% in the last year? I would say that I would leave the JSO to administer the budget as see fit to continue getting those kind of results.
Tracy?
I'm a trained, expert listener, and this is what you call gaslighting, and as I said, this makes absolutely no sense. I have never, ever talked about shifting money out of the sheriff's budget, again, as if I have that power, I'm not even elected. What I have talked about is the need to take care of our police officers as well as the people in this community.
This next question is to both, starting with you, Tracy. Jacksonville has a very troubled past in terms of race relations. As city councilperson, please give some concrete examples of how you would work to improve these relations.
Well, I would say I've already been doing that in terms of the kind of campaign that we've been running. We've been having town halls, meeting people where they are, and I've been talking about race. And I don't think in 2022, especially after the last couple of years in particular, but really the last 400, that you cannot think about the impact of slavery, institutionalized racism, redlining, the inequity, I mean, I could go on and on. And so we have been talking about that. And I have also been talking about the fact that after the murder of George Floyd, I was out at many protests here in Jacksonville, but as a peacekeeper, working alongside JSO, and have had so many conversations, both with people of color, but also a lot of white people, who honestly have come to me and said, like, "How can you talk about this as a white person?" And my response is, "If we're not talking about it as white people, then we're part of the problem." So I would continue doing more of the same, which is to name things out loud and say them, and not hide behind, you know, my own discomfort or, or privilege, for that matter.
Nick?
There are racists in our country, there are racists in our institution, but that doesn't mean our institutions are racist, and that doesn't mean we live in a racist nation. One of the issues we have is inequality of opportunity, not, not outcome, that's not America, but inequality of opportunity. And we should always look to rectify those inequalities of opportunity. To me, the way to solve race relations in Jacksonville is threefold. It's reduce street violence, it's invest in infrastructure, and it's improve educational opportunities in the neighborhoods that need it. Those are the three areas that I think we will implement to improve race relations, and that's fundamental to my platform.
Tracy?
Nothing further.
Nick? Okay. All right, the next question, start with you, Nick. The superintendent of schools of Duval County has recommended an increase in the sales tax to recruit retained teachers, at the same time to... Oh, the delegation appears poised to penalize the Duval County school system, it's the legislature. I'm gonna start over again, this one's difficult to read, I apologize. The superintendent of schools of Duval County has recommended an increase in the sales tax to recruit and retain teachers. At the same time, the legislature appears poised to penalize the Duval County school system for violating state law in the mask mandates. What is your position regarding the proposed raise in sales tax?
That statement, I believe, is not, Diana Johnson said, "Raise the sales tax."
Well, that is a clarification, there is no proposal anywhere to raise the sales tax. That's strictly a function of the legislature. This is a proposal to add a mill of property tax. Yes, Don, thank you.
Who's first?
You are.
Me? Okay. I've not seen the report. I don't think legislation has been proposed on that one-mill increase, so I can't possibly weigh in on whether I would support or not. I will immediately say that there's nothing more fundamentally important than improving education for our children, and teachers deserve all the credit in the world for delivering that education to our children. So I would look at ways while on city council to make sure, as I just stated in the last question, that we provide top-quality education to every child in Duval County.
Tracy?
The South and Florida have, have, have a long history of opposing integration, and you see this in policy, and you see it in funding. And so, you know, the chickens have come home to roost in terms of the attack on public education, even what is happening in the legislature right now. I think that this, this, my understanding is that this request from Diana Green, the superintendent, is also wanting it to be voted on by the citizens, which, again, I think makes a lot of sense. This is probably an area where Mr. Howland and I are in agreement, which is, you know, I went to public schools, all my kids went to public schools, and they're important. And we know what this looks like, we know where the inequity is in this city regarding the public education.
Nick?
Yeah, there is inequity in the city, and particularly on schools that have failed for years in the northwest part of our city. So I'm really thrilled by some of the educational option improvement opportunities we're seeing right now with the IDEA schools going up in certain key locations with the performance of the KIPP schools. Excited about education in Duval County, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Tracy?
I would say that part of the reason for some of those underperforming schools is when you, over the last 40, 50 years, underfund them, and, I mean, you all can look this up, I mean, there's court cases and legal documents about the attempts to refuse and resist integration and giving folks children, right, children, the resources that they need to learn.
Nick, follow up, last, okay. The next question has to do with campaign finance, and Tracy, you're first. How did you finance your campaign?
So this has been the topic, and if you are listening to First Coast Connect, I talked about this at length yesterday. About 56% of the money that we have spent on this campaign is my money. It's all there in our public documents, you can read it, and then the rest of the money was from donors, 97% of whom are in Jacksonville, a few that are outside. So for those of you, I know Don is here and a couple of other people that have run for office, when you run for office, what you do is you have to raise a lot of money, unfortunately. Well, I would love to see some limits on that, but you reach out to your friends and family. And I have friends and families and colleagues all across this country, and they gave me money when I reached out and said that I was gonna run for this seat. We had, we went from zero to 100 overnight, and so I knew that we were gonna put some of our resources in this. This seat is important, my message is important, my platform is important, and we use that money to both promote that, but also engage with people all across the city.
Nick?
Well, that's one thing that Tracy and I agree on, you have to raise a lot of money to run a campaign like this in a sprint like we're in right now. And almost all my money is from individuals, companies, and other groups, and we've had to raise all the way up to the last minute because it, we're expecting a very low turnout in this race, and we need to get the word out to drive, you know, people to the polls.
Well, we all know, if you read the finance reports, Mr. Howland has dark money, and what that means is he's accepted a lot of money from political, what we call PACs, political committees, that go to the same person and the same address. He's also funded by developers and real estate lobbyists and people who will have business before the city council, and that is something that voters need to know and understand.
Nick?
Yeah, there's nothing dark about that money. You can look up every single PAC that contributed to my campaign and find out who contributed to those PACs. That's Florida sunshine law, that's Florida election law, all that is traceable. The reason that so many folks from so many diverse interests donated to my campaign is because they believe in my message. That message is strong support for public safety, more jobs, and a strategic plan for growth, so we can make Jacksonville one of the great American cities.
Well, I would just say, when somebody writes you a check for $50,000, my, my question is, what's the, what's the quid pro quo? What are they expecting in return?
All right, we have reached the end of our pre-program questions. How are we on time? Are we ready for more, or are we ready to go to closing statements?
I was wondering if I had a question?
Okay, we'll do a second Fang and Claw question, go ahead.
Do we have time?
All right, go ahead.
This, this amount?
Yeah.
This period of time you will be elected for is a year and a half?
A little under.
Barely.
Sorry?
A little under, year and three months.
Okay. So I watched Rocky I, Rocky II, Rocky III, Rocky IV, Rocky V. Are we gonna be watching the Tracy and Nick II, Tracy and Nick III? We're gonna go through this again in 18 months?
If that's what it takes.
Tracy?
We'll see what happens on Tuesday.
All right, well, that's, that was quick. With that, we will go to closing statements in, by prior arrangement. Nick, you're first.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you very much again, Bill and Tiger Bay, for having this debate. I love being able to have discourse on these issues. Jacksonville is a military town, it's a business town, it's a family town. I'm a veteran, I'm a businessman, I'm a family man, and I think those values and characteristics and experiences are gonna be fundamental in helping lead this city where it needs to be in the next 10 years. I look forward to doing so, and I really appreciate your support and the groundswell of support I've received from folks all around our great city. Thank you.
Right. Tracy?
Well, thank you, Bill, thank you, everyone, Tiger Bay. I'm looking across this room, and I'm thinking, many of y'all are not members of Tiger Bay, and you need to be. So I wanna put a, I'm a member, I wanna put a plug in, because like, I think you see they do a really good job of bringing people together to have conversations and, and have the hard conversations. And that's what I do every day in my practice. I have never shied away from an interview, a question, I do my best to answer it honestly, thoughtfully, that is what I will do if I'm elected, and before, I, this is so important, you all, I work for you. If you elect me, I work for the citizens of this community to make this city better, to make your lives better, and to tell the truth. So thank you so much for having us.
Well, thank you both, Tracy and Nick, for being here.
Thank you.
(applause)